It's now six thirty. I'd like to call this September twenty-fifth. Meeting of the Menneson City Council to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Counselperson Costner?
Here.
Counselman Nestor?
Present.
Counselperson Thomas? Counselman Wachikowski?
Here.
Mayor Moesha?
Present.
We not seen present at court.
Thank you. I'd also like to make sure everybody's aware that we will hold an executive session at the conclusion of this meeting for discussed personnel matters. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Tim, uh, Piet? Is he?
John.
John, to come up and lead us in prayer.
I want to thank you for your attention, and I want to thank the people of Menneson for standing, uh, for times such as this, for prayer, uh, for what it means, sometimes in spite of us, but what it means in the heavens and on the earth. And with that, let's pray. Sovereign Lord God of heaven and earth, we are reminded that unless you build, those who labor, labor in vain. Therefore, we acknowledge our dependence upon your mercy and your guidance for our elected officials in dealing with the needed provisions, guidance, protections, watchfulness in the affairs of the people of Menneson. With reverent humbleness, we recall that you have taken little places like Bethlehem and turned them into celebrated memorials. We ask not for greatness according to the think of mankind, but for the necessity and the provisions for this season of the history, the making, the sustaining of the city of Menneson, its leadership, and its people. We are thankful that we are part of a nation wherein, from its highest political elected officials nationally down to the cities and towns like Menneson, have acknowledged our dependency of needing your guidance for our laws, our actions, and for our people, each having necessary to preserve this nation's divine purpose and godly leadership. Sovereign, omniscient, and merciful God, we respectfully ask that the decisions tonight lead us forward to the progress of tomorrow, be they challenges to the elected officials, the incidents to our citizens, and/or the needs of our city. Grant us wisdom and counsel with understanding in our discussions, and knowledge for application that transforms and conforms us and our city for all of us and others, even as an example of the righteousness that exalts a nation. Bring revival morally and restoration for our churches, safety to and for our homes, our schools, and our streets. Stir our hearts beyond a slogan that declares in God we trust. Let it be for us a way of living according to the many great things you have done here in Menneson, according to your good pleasure and divine purpose, all for your glory, our well-building, and the upbuilding of this cu- this city. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free of any injustice for all.
Thank you.
We're still in the process of resolving the amendments from the last work session, so those will be postponed until the next session we have. At this time, I'd like to invite the public for questions directly related to the agenda for i- agenda items only.
Ernie Telegraphus, twenty-nine recs. Can you explain to the taxpayers, you got the police MMO for five hundred and fifty thousand, and then you got the firemen only seven thousand? And, and so why is this my get?
I will explain that when we get to that, but it has to do with the fact that we got a number of police officers. We have one person on the fire department that was paid, has a pension plan.
I don't know. It's kind of lopsided.
Very much so.
And then, um... I just want to ask the, uh, council, if it isn't on the agenda, could they still talk?
Not on thi- not at this time.
That includes the police or the firemen?
Mm-hmm.
So they can't say nothing?
Right.
There's a separate public comment section.
To the end?
Yes.
But they can't talk?
It's not on the agenda.
When are you going to put it on the agenda?
The ninth, next month.
Next month is going to be on the agenda. Okay. So I wanted to know.
Anybody else? Does anybody have any correspondents they'd like to bring forth?
No, mayor.
Uh, Slusser, would you have, like to give us your report?
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everybody. Sent out the letters of notification for the demo hearings, uh, at the last meeting. Nobody showed up for those hear- hearings. Did participate in a meeting with the DEP concerning the EQ tank or the proposed EQ tank. Uh, the mayor will get into more details with this, but the DEP has okayed a separation project along the Marion Sewer Shed instead of the EQ tank, which should be less expensive. Uh, there is a first reading and a motion advertised for a, an ordinance to add a stop sign. It'll be a three-way stop sign on Spring and Lee Drive. Uh, the chief brought that up at the work session. I think there is a stop sign on Lee Drive already, but it was not in the ordinance, so that's in there as well. Uh, participated in the police negotiations. There's a tentative agreement in front of council this evening. Um, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Call upon our city treasurer for his report.
Mayor, council, and citizens of Menneson, this is my report for the month of August 2025. Under garbage fees revenues, we have current income in August of three thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Year-to-date, five hundred and sixty-one thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Budget amount, four hundred thousand dollars. Delinquent garbage, August, we received two thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifteen cents. This includes amount collected by Portnoy of seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty cents. Penalties and interest by Portnoy is one thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Year-to-date, delinquent garbage, eighty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. It's included by, collected by Portnoy, that was in the account above, eighteen thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-nine cents, and also the interest and penalties, which was five thousand one hundred and nine dollars and ninety-two cents. The delinquent garbage fees budget was seventy-five thousand dollars, and the penalty and interest from Portnoy is two thousand five hundred dollars. That's the budget amount. Garbage fees collected for 2026, August, we received fourteen dollars and fifty cents. Year-to-date, two hundred and, two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty cents, budget amount, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Total August income from garbage was seven thousand four hundred dollars and twenty cents. Year-to-date, six hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. Budget amount was six hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. City real estate taxes revenue, current, in August, we received nineteen thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-two cents. Year-to-date, one million nine hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. Budget amount for 2025 was one million four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. City taxes prior year collected, we received nothing in August. Year-to-date, thirty thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. Budget amount for 2025 was ten thousand dollars. Subtotal collection, year-to-date, is one million nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. Delinquent city taxes, we received nothing from Westmoreland County Tax Bureau this quarter. August, uh, year-to-date, is one million nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. The budget amount was ten thousand dollars. Delinquent city taxes, collected by Westmoreland County also. Nothing this quarter. August, year-to-date, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty cents. Budget amount, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Total year-to-date taxes collected, two million ninety-five thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-three cents. Budget amount was one million seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Distribution is as follows. As of August thirty-first, 2025, the general fund received one million three hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. The budget amount was one million thirty-four thousand five hundred and five dollars and ninety cents. Depth service received, year-to-date, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-one cents. Budget amount, two hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty cents. Library received, year-to-date, thirty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Budget amount, thirty thousand thirty-seven dollars and forty cents. Parks received, year-to-date, a hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty cents. Budget amount, a hundred and forty-one thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and ten cents. Total year-to-date was one million nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. The budget amount for 2025 was one million four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Miscellaneous income, real estate transfer tax, August, we received two thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. Year-to-date, fifty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-eight cents. Budget amount, sixty thousand dollars. Earned income tax, August, we received eighty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and ten cents. Year-to-date, five hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. Budget amount for 2025, six hundred and fifty-one thousand forty-six dollars. Mercantile tax, August, we received fifty-five dollars and fourteen cents. Year-to-date, twenty-one thousand four hundred and one dollars and fifty-eight cents. Budget amount, twenty thousand dollars. Local service tax, August, we received thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. Year-to-date, fifty-five thousand seven hundred and one dollars and twenty-nine cents. Budget amount, seventy-two thousand dollars. Tax certifications, August, we received one thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. Year-to-date, fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars. Budget amount, twenty thousand dollars. Municipal lien letters, August, we received one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Year-to-date, ten thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Budget amount, twelve thousand dollars. Line usage accounts, unsecured payments, August, we received nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Year-to-date, eight thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars. Line usage fees, August, we received twen- sixty-six thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Year-to-date, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand twelve dollars and thirty cents. Total year-to-date income fif- on line usage fees was five hundred and ninety-six thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty cents. Mayor, that concludes my moun- report for the month of, month of August.
Mayor, motion to accept the treasurer's report for garbage fees and city real estate taxes collected for the month of August 2025?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselman Wachikowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moesha?
Yes. We don't have our city controller here. Do you, does anybody have a report?
We do.
Okay. Karen, would you read the treasurer's controller's report, please?
Sure. This is for August 2025, general fund, CFS bank checking account. Bank reconciliation of, as of August thirty-first, 2025, beginning bank balance as of July thirty-first, 2025, is one million three hundred and forty, three, one million, three hundred and, oh my goodness, one million?
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand, four hundred and thr- twenty-three dollars and forty-five cents. I'm not used to reading these big amounts. Deposits, one ninety-three, seven ninety, forty-one. Expenses, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and si- three hundred and six, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two, and forty-seven cents. Ending balance as of August thirty-first, 2025, one million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-one, and thirty-nine cents. Outstanding checks, fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-one cents. Outstanding deposits, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Reconcile balance to bank statement is one million sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven, and thirty-three cents. And that's Rosalie's report.
Thank you. Does anybody have any old business?
No, mayor.
May I get my chance to talk about some of the things that we have going on in the city? And first off, I'm quite pleased to announce to everybody that we received permission from the PADEP to pursue a separation project in lieu of the EQ tank that was, had been long pursued along, uh, Parinte Boulevard. And just so everybody understands, that EQ tank, when I first came to Menneson, some sixteen, seventeen years ago, that was talked about as being basically a five hundred, a four hundred, at the time, it was four hundred thousand gallons, at a dollar a gallon, four hundred thousand dollar project. That has escalated. In 2021, it became a four million dollar project, up by a factor of ten. Here about a month ago, they came to the city and said it's going to be an eight million dollar project, and at that point, we said, wait a second, let's back up and rethink this. Back in the early 2012, 2013 timeframe, we had a study done, a flow study done, that showed that if we did the separation, it would cost the city about one point three million dollars to do separation. And what I mean by separation is we separate the sanitary water from the sewage water, yeah, along everything on the downhill side towards the park from Hilltop Fire Station, the Marion Avenue area. If we separate that water, it would have cost us one point three million dollars back in 2014. At the time, they were saying it was going to be four hundred thousand dollars for a tank, so it only made sense to go with the tank. When the price started going up in the tank, we finally reached a threshold where we said, wait a second, let's back up. Separation has not gone up that much. We went back and did an update on our economics, and that had gone up to four million dollars for separation. So we've already committed four million dollars in 2021 for take, addressing this problem. We can use the money that was going to build the EQ tank in 2021 to build a separation project in 2025, 2026 timeframe that will solve the problem. What does that mean to everybody? It means that this is not an alarm that we're going to raise the, the, uh, line usage fee to everybody. It will continue to remain at the state it is right now. So that's a very positive thing. There offer, it offers many advantages, too, because when, just in normal use, a half million dollar, million gallon tank, we had to offset by half million gallons of water. This will offset, on average, about point six million gallons, so six hundred thousand gallons, is offset more water than the tank would hold, on average. And in these severe rainstorms we've been having, it offsets in excess of a million gallons. So it offers a whole lot of advantages doing this separation project as opposed to the EQ tank. And you have to understand, we did not have a choice of just forgetting the whole project. This is part of the DEP corrective action plan that they have for the city of Menneson, and that is something that we've been investing all this, this money that we've been doing thus far in order to address. So that's a very positive, positive thing that we got done this, this past week. Another thing that's very positive, we've reached agreement with the police on our police contract, so we can get that language finalized, and that will be approved ver- very su- surely. Just because the firemen are here, I want to talk about something else. We, we have great respect for what they're doing over there, but part of the problem is their garage door that they have over there. This garage door was damaged. For some unknown reason, it came down on top of a fire truck as it was leaving the building, did damage the fire truck, and it did damage to the, the fire door itself, this garage door. Uh, we've been in constant communication with the insurance company over the last couple of weeks trying to get this resolved. It is not one claim, but it's two claims, and I don't understand why they're doing this to us, but they're forcing it to be two claims with the insurance company. So the fact that the garage door came down, damaged the fire truck, doesn't mean that it's all a facility contract, uh, hit claim. The fact it was done to the, the fire truck becomes a vehicular claim, but it doesn't have any help to the, the building. The company that installed that came back with some ridiculous terms for the city. They were holding the city hostage, and we said, we're not going to play that game. So the insurance company started contacting other garage door companies. Uh, Joy started contacting them. We've had a concerted effort to try to find another company to do this. It turns out that not just any old garage door company can do a garage door as big as what exists in that fire department. It's a big garage door. Most of them said, we, we're not interested. But we did come across a couple, one in particular, that said that we will come down and we will do a cost estimate on it for no cost whatsoever. They came down on the eighteenth, they met with somebody at the fire department, and they did an inspection, they, they determined what they need to do, but they never did come back with a quote. I've been on the phone with them all day long, and I'm convinced that the problem was that they sent two people down to do the, the inspection, one from Montgahilla, one from Pittsburgh. And when they went back, they, one thought the other was doing the, the quote, and neither of them ended up doing it. So the manager got involved and is now in the process of having that quote, and it should be in, in our hands by tomorrow. I thought it was going to be here before this evening, but they didn't make it. That will be resolved as quickly as it possibly can. As soon as we get that resolved, the insurance company will get it going with the, the fire department, to get that set. With that, Karen, would you like to read my motions for me, please?
Sure. Motion for second reading, and motion to adopt ordinance number twelve seventy-six for the city of Menneson, county of Westmoreland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending chapter three sixty-five vehicles and traffic section three sixty-five dash seven. Speed limits, three sixty-five dash twelve, one-way streets by adding additional speed restrictions and additional one-way streets, section three sixty-five fifteen, fifteen stop intersections, three sixty-five dash twenty-one parking prohibited at all times, and three fifty-six dash twenty-four special parking zones.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd like to spend a couple of minutes just talking about what that really means. Um, and Slusser can, can straighten me out if I make any mistakes here. First off, the speed limits that we're talking about is reducing the speed limit from twenty-five to fifteen in some streets that are very narrow, where we don't have, uh, a lot of room for cars parked on both sides of the street, and people zooming through there very quickly is a problem. An example of that is, is Mont Raver, what's some of the, is there any other examples?
That whole plant up there.
The whole plant up there. So that's the primary reason for that. The, uh, one-way streets, um...
Same area, Mont Raver plant.
Same thing, Mont Raver, getting, identifying all the one-way streets that are up there. And it's actually not one big loop, but it's the number of streets that form a loop that are up there, that are all identified in that ordinance. The, um, one-way parking, one-way, additional one-way parking on the streets, that has to do with some, some, uh, in Mont Raver.
No, Braddock and Summit Avenue.
Yeah, okay.
It's Braddock Avenue from Sixth Street to Ninth Street, no parking on the north side, and Summit Avenue on the south side from Grant Avenue to Leeds Avenue.
Very good. With that said, uh, call a roll, please.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselman Wachikowski?
Yes, mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution number ten of 2025 by the city of Menneson, certifying the provision of local match for state operating financial assistance for the Mid-Mond Valley Transit Authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does anybody want a description of what that is?
Yes.
I thought we did this one already.
I thought we did that.
We, we made the, we made the payment, but we never passed the resolution. This is the resolution that goes along with the payment that we made a month or two ago.
All right.
That's all it is. We paid the bill before we passed the resolution. Call a roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselman Wachikowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to accept the res- resignation of the city clerk of the city of Menneson to become effective as of the date of her notice of resignation as September fifteenth, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
This pains me to say, but... Call a roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselman Wachikowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
I'd like to say no, but I have to say yes.
You don't have to say yes.
Motion to approve a handicap parking place at one oh five Linden Avenue in the city of Menneson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
We talked about this a year ago. Why is it up again? We, we, we didn't pass it a year ago. Is there something changed to make sure we're, make the thing, we're going to pass it now?
I think that they actually filed the, the handicap application with the police.
What do you mean, one motion ahead? Oh, I'm going one motion ahead, I'm sorry. I, I apologize.
But there was some discussion on this a while back, councilman, but what's been rectified is the, uh, handicap placard that allows it to go forward with the space.
No, no, I don't have a problem with the, I was, I was talking about it, we can get the, I'm sorry.
Okay, call a roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselman Wachikowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to place a painted crosswalk and yield pedestrian signage at the intersection of the library and His Place Community and Moore Coffee Shop on Third Street in the city of Menneson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, now my question.
Okay.
Uh, we talked about this a year ago, and we pa- we didn't pass it. What cho- what changed now?
They sent us another request, and there's been several near accidents there. It's really become a safety issue.
And, and it was encompassed in other Third Street issues, so this takes it out of that, and...
Okay, what are the other Third Street issues?
Uh, the, up...
I, I don't want that.
Up past Scoona Maker on Third, we were talking about putting lines there and some yield signs, but we talked about maybe that's a little too much, and wanted to continue the discussion. This one really had no opposition, other than it was included with the others.
So this is going to go from the library steps?
To the parks, the, the city parking lot across the way.
Yep. There's like, there's steps that go...
Not the libraries, not a, just drawn from the, uh, curb area, uh, where the parking lot is, in the library, across to the, uh, His Place.
City park, yeah, yeah.
Just that small square, but it's catching the folks who are coming around the corner.
Is that going to be too close to the corner?
I thought we talked, we talked about that, that that was one of the problems, and that's one of the reasons we ditched it.
Well, we were going to, we'll put some, uh, it's going to take some enforcement by our police, there's no doubt about it, but we're going to have also some yield to pedestrian signs placed in such a way that slows traffic down there as well.
All right, we'll give it a try.
Call a roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselman Wachikowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve the proposed demolition of properties and structures in the city of Menneson, approved at a pub- public hearing on September eleventh as follows. Five oh nine four- Fourteenth Street, parcel number twenty dash oh two dash oh six dash zero dash zero nine zero. Six twenty-two Summit Avenue, parcel number twenty dash two dash six dash zero dash seven forty-one. Six thirty Summit Avenue, parcel number twenty dash two dash six dash zero dash seven thirty-nine. Six thirty-two Summit Avenue, parcel number twenty dash two dash six dash zero dash seven thirty-eight. Nine sixteen, nine eighteen Summit Avenue, parcel number twenty dash two dash six dash zero dash seven thirty-four. Seven twenty Summit Avenue, parcel number twenty dash two dash eight dash zero dash seven thirty-three. All properties were subject to a public hearing held on September eleventh, 2025.
Are there any questions?
Second.
Or second first, I'm sorry. Any questions? Call a roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselman Wachikowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pass resolution eleven of 2025 of the city of Menneson, council, county of Westmoreland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, to apply to Westmoreland County for the demolition of blighted structures located at fourteen thirty-five Ross Strayer Street, nine seventeen Grant Avenue, six forty-four Third Street, nine twenty Summit Avenue, and three ten Riverview Drive.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Call a roll. Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselman...
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve a permanent restoration work agreement between the city of Monessen and the Peoples Natural Gas Company, LLC regarding permanent restoration of designated areas of Overhill Drive, Washington Drive and Jackson Drive.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, John.
No, no, you go, go.
What are permanent restorations?
So, P and G has a internal company, they're, first off, when they come in and replace gas lines, they're responsible for doing curb-to-curb replacement of the road. The, uh, problem is their internal restoration group has gotten so expensive, they've asked the city to give them a quote for doing it ourselves. So, we, our vi- engineering get, per, parents or quote gives it to them and then they come back with an agreement with, with it that says, "We will do it at that, they will pay us that money and will be our responsibility to pave those roads."
Yeah, this is the third or fourth section. We did, I think...
It's not the first time.
Marion, um, Marion, we did Pacific and...
Scenery.
Scenery.
But, my question too is, like, kind of adding on to this, who did scenery? Was it our folks that did?
Our folks.
That did scenery?
It was a city contract.
It was a city contract, we managed the project, yes.
Cause there's our, there's already issues going on now with scenery. If you're going off Monessen Boulevard and you make a left on scenery going towards nine oh six, there's already some of that asphalt that hasn't been properly sealed chipping out.
We need to talk to our engineer about that.
Yes. I'll bring it up after the meeting.
They, they all have maintenance spots.
Okay, but yeah, there, it's already chipping up and concrete or, yeah, cause it's, it's scenery doesn't look like it's been done. It just looks like it's temporary from how bad it looks.
Okay.
Sorry, mayor.
I, my problem I'm starting to have with this, the city is not in the business to be doing paving. That is not our job.
But, we've been doing paving for years and years and years. It has been our job historically. All the CDBG roads we paved...
But, this is somebody else coming back and giving us money and saying, "Here, it's yours."
That's right.
That CDBG, that, that is not the same issue.
No, it's the same project management.
I mean, I kind of like, thought the idea is it helps us move things around if need be.
Thus far, we have paved roads at less money than what we've received money for. We, we got together with P and G and we asked them, we said, "Do we want, you want us to return this money to you?" And they said, "Well, we gave that to, money to you in good faith, that we thought it was a fair price and we got what we wanted. And we got what we wanted. We ended up to getting the roads paved and we got some extra money on the side."
You can see that we'd start forming a committee for this, that...
You know, and it has been, there's a special paving account that it is.
Oh, don't worry, I made sure that happened.
Okay, alright.
Well, okay.
Call roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion for first reading and motion to advertise ordinance number twelve seventy-seven, amending chapter three sixty-five, section three sixty-five fifteen, adding for a stop sign at the intersection, uh, at Spring Drive and Lee Drive in the city of Monessen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to award WA Patrakis Contracting LLC the contract for phase three D to include concrete lining of the parente stormwater line from the tracks to the river in the amount of six hundred and fifty, six, six hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents as the lowest qualified bid as per the recommendation of the city engineer. This is financed as a part of the USDA loan and required by the PA DEP as part of the city of Monessen corrective action plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? I'm just glad to see this finally happening. Call roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve change order four for MCSP as part of phase, phase C, three C to allow one year to complete the project due to delays of right of way and easements. There is no cost associated with this change order.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, what was change order one, two and three?
They weren't passed a long time ago.
Is this for the sewage project?
Yes. Change order four is because we, it took us so long to get permission across the track, so long for us to get permission to do all that work.
Oh, you're talking about the rubber track?
Yeah.
Oh, well, that would have made things a lot easier if it said that, then I would know what you're talking about.
That, that's what, that, that's the only reason why that, we're resetting the clock and allowing them some additional time. Otherwise, they would run, be out of time to do the thing according to contract. Call roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve the tentative agreement between the city of Monessen and Teemsters Local Union Two oh five, representing the police department employees, effective January twenty twenty-sixth through December twenty-first, twenty twenty-nine, contingent upon the final agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve the healthcare changes for the twenty twenty-sixth police employment contract relative to recent negotiations and approval for the twenty twenty-five costs will take effect on twelve one, twenty twenty-five and will be held at those rates until January first, twenty twenty-seven, contingent upon final agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to award Tresco Paving Corporation as the lowest qualified vendor to contract to pave Columbus scenery and parts of Monessen Boulevard in the amount of ninety thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars into W E C Engineering for design and the coordination of the bidding process in the amount of nine thousand, eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents and for three thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-two cents to perform construction oversight paid for through the paving account of the city of Monessen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just to...
Yeah, I was going to have a question.
From point, this is a result of this.
That's the, my question is, is...
This is part of this.
So, this payment, is this going to what is already done on scenery?
This will fix the road that's on scenery.
Okay, because...
So, they must have laid it.
They've got a temporary solution.
That's sort of been temporary then, cause that, okay, cause that's...
This will be, this will be curb-to-curb re, new pavement.
Okay, cause I was going to say, if that was the solution and that was the permanent fix and we're paying them after it, I was going to say, okay.
No, no, this is, the temporary was, solution was done by P and G and now we're going to go back and mill that, that down and do a permanent layer.
Thank you, mayor.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve phase three A change order seven for inside pipe contracting. This includes two hundred and twelve point eight nine VF manhole lining, four thousand, one hundred and sixty-three LF eight-inch CIPP lining, one thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine LF fifteen-inch CIPP lining, sixty-three LF eighteen-inch CIPP lining and as of directed spot repairs required in the amounts of five hundred and sixty-three dollars, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-four cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I have no idea what any of this means.
Well, first off, what this is, is when we went out on the USDA phase three, we, uh, we were allocated some fifteen million dollars to, to accomplish that. We basically accomplished that. Now, we're working on what's left of the, a grant that really is just that, just a grant. And, uh, what engineering did is they went back and they identified some other places in the city that have smaller pipes that they want to, to fix. Um, the VF is, is, is linear feet, should be LF in all cases, but first one's a misprint, is linear feet. So, they're going to replace, uh, well over a mile of lining and pipes throughout the city in various places uh, in addition to what we did with, with the original loan. Any other questions?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
But, the way this is, is this is assuming that there were six change orders before this.
Yes, and there was.
For what?
Over the last two years, we've done change orders for different things. This, this is being processed because they don't want to have to redo their contract, so they're doing it as a change order. We have some money left over and we, we didn't want to have to re, rebid the project, but as such, we're doing it as change orders.
But, we agreed a long time ago, when everything started, it...
This work hasn't been done yet.
This work has not been done yet.
The council approved before the work started.
That's what this is, is approval before, they have not started this project yet and they won't without our approval.
So, you're telling me, spot repairs for them to go back are going to cost five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars?
To line a mile worth of pipe, do all the, the, uh, manhole lining, um, yeah.
All of that.
All of that.
With all of these change orders, you're getting more pipes remediated than what was initially planned at the beginning of this project.
Well, I know we came under, but I also don't want to just blow it away either.
Well, we're not. We have, and first off, this grant, like, is required to be used on, on that. There's no, no choices and...
This doesn't concern any of the inlets, right? Just the, the manhole lining?
Right.
Okay.
And the main, in those sections.
Yeah. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve amendment number nine in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars to W E C Engineering for the design to add an additional two thousand, six hundred and twenty-six LF of eight-inch, five thousand, two hundred and sixty linear foot of ten-inch, three thousand, five hundred and forty-nine linear foot of twelve-inch and one thousand, four hundred and forty-nine linear foot of fifteen-inch CIPP pipe lining in various locations throughout the city of Monessen. An additional seventy manholes will be rehabilitated and lined in conjunction with the CIPP pipe lining. Open trench spot repairs will be completed on an as-needed basis.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody want me to try to explain this one?
Yes.
This is all the engineering for everything that's in O and plus more, there will be a nu- future change order coming forth.
Okay.
But, it's all engineering things.
Alright. That's the nature of the beast.
Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes. And by the way, just as a point of interest, uh, I did ask that Bill, what's his last name?
Armstrong.
Armstrong will be here at our work session and he will provide a, a, up, uh, a synopsis of all that they've accomplished and what this change order means, this amendment means. Tony, your turn.
Thank you, mayor. Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of ninety-three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-five cents, ninety-seven cents. All invoices are attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yep.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the refuse account in the amount of fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-six cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the line usage account in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-nine cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the parks fund in the account of five hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the liquid fuels account in the amount of one hundred and nine dollars and ninety-five cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the recreation account in the amount of five dollars and ninety-four cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the grant fund in the amount of eight hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve the transfer of seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-six cents from the general fund to the payroll account for payroll.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to transfer four thousand dollars from the general account to the healthcare.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to appro- approve and pay the police MMO in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars from the general fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Just so everybody understands, this is the retirement fund that we have to fund for the police. Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve and pay the fireman M M O in the amount of seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars from the general fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
And these are the balances as of today. Debt service fund, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eighty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents. Fire escrow, ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. General fund, one million, seventy-six thousand, I'm sorry, one million, seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. Grant fund, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. Healthcare is six thousand, ninety-one dollars and fifty-five cents. Line usage is eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. Liquid fuels is one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-four cents. Parks fund, one hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-eight cents. Payroll is sixteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-four cents. Rec fund is one thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and two cents. Refuse fund is one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, twenty-one dollars and ninety-six cents. And the paving escrow is one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, sixty-one dollars and eleven cents. And Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you.
About what?
Do you have loss this report?
We do.
Okay, would you please read for us?
Sure, this is the streets department report for August of twenty-twenty-five. Picked up garbage downtown, marked P A one calls, cold patched, got ready for concert in the park, and got ready for the holiday weekend and helped the park as needed. And that's my report.
Thank you.
That was my report.
John, your report, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of council, administrative staff, rail officers, citizens of Monessin. Here's the following reports for the public safety department. Police department receipts for the month of August, twenty-twenty-five. Miscellaneous collection, which only consists of one, which is shallower prisoners, one hundred and seventy-five dollars for a total of one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Court receipts from the district justice office, vehicle code fines collected, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Crime code fines collected, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and nine cents. City ordinance collected, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars, seventy-three cents. Total receipts from district justice office, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars for total receipts collected for August, twenty-twenty-five, one thousand, seventy-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. Total citations, forty-seven, year to date, five thirty. Former report is the code activity for August, twenty-twenty-five. Hav- habitation permits, nine, correction letters, fourteen. Animal complaints, two, which were vermin, miscellaneous complaints, ten. Office meetings with residents, three. Building permits, four, zoning permits, two. Uh, right now, that's all I have, the reports in front of me. Um, before I yield the floor, Mayor, uh, I just wanted to thank both fire departments for Tuesday, for the folks that took the time to donate for the activities for the smores at Dale Elementary Center. Uh, my children had a blast, I'm sure the rest of the kids did, so thank you for your, your time. Uh, I also wanna say that they're having an event, uh, Saturday, September twenty-seventh, from ten A M. to one P M., the Monessin Fire Department truck, touch a truck. Come and visit the fire station and meet local, local fire department firefighters, volunteer fire department firefighters. Uh, also, another question, Chief Uhaas, Chief Delmore, have we checked, uh, the generator lately since the season's changed over? Have we been looking at that?
The, uh, generator at the police fire station is working fine. It's every Monday at nine A M. it kicks on. Uh, you check it, you know, you can hear it from the building, but it kicks on every Monday at nine A M.
Okay, and then, um, any maintenance, preventative maintenance, like oil change and battery replacement, do we know if it needs to be done or performed on the generator?
They, they have been coming down, they were down, uh, maybe a couple months back and they just made it apart.
Alright, uh, another question, and then Mike, you might be able to help me on this one. What are the updates on the Hilltop Fire Department? I noticed I just approved a change order request for the plumbing in the bathrooms. How's the process going on at the department?
As far as the vendor coming in to do the work with the shower?
Coming in, doing the work, yeah.
He's been notified and hopefully he's starting to start that soon.
Do we know if the floor has been fixed yet?
It's been fixed and now using the, the, they parking the fire truck in, indoors again.
Okay, and then my next question is, do we know if we looked into like the safety corridors within the municipalities for speeding?
The chief is looking into, to that and we kinda talked about it, not, not likely to happen.
Not likely to happen, okay, so we'll have to hit the pavement with something else. Alright, other than that, I'll yield the floor.
Councilman, we have some information on the guardrails that I'd like to share with you.
Sure, please, yeah.
Move forward, so after the meeting maybe.
Yeah, thank you, Mike, I appreciate that. Other than that, I yield the floor, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Karen, it's your turn.
Alright, I just had a question and it has nothing to do with my report or anything, but I had been asked, and we were talking about this before the meeting started, about the C D B G money from twenty-twenty-four. And somebody said, did we even get it yet? And, and I have no clue. And so you were talking about it and I thought, this is all new to me that we would apply for something a year ago and still not have it yet. So when we think about things that we want, it can't be an immediate need.
Right.
Because it's too bad for us. So if you would maybe, I don't know if anybody else has questions about that or wants to know.
Twenty-twenty-four, we went through a process of public hearings, we did an application, and we, uh, we, uh, been waiting for the contract to come through. Um, it's very coincidental, and I don't believe in coincidences, but it was very strange. I sent an email to the person that notified us that we were awarded the, the contract, which was back in June of this year, and we hadn't received the contract. I hit the send button, and as soon as I hit the send button, it pops up in my email, there's the contract. Couldn't have been closer timing if you'd have ever planned it. It was just literally within a second, it just popped up and I got the contract. What does that mean? It means that we can now start writing, we can start doing projects that we budgeted for last year now. This twenty-twenty-five that we're doing now, we won't be able to touch the money until twenty-twenty-six. So, yes, there's a long lag time.
Okay.
Mayor, for the good of the firemen, there is forty-eight thousand dollars in turnout here in that twenty-twenty-four allocation, so that'll be able to be moved forward quickly now. Uh, it, it's amazing that I said the mayor hit that button and there was the contract that they sent in, they're gonna send it hard copy also tomorrow. But that's in there as far as the turnout here, the forty-eight kick.
Speaking of that, I apologize for stepping out of line, but, um, how far are we, Chief Heppel, on like catching up on the radios? Do we still, are we still playing catch-up on replacing some of those?
Uh, I think local units in the trucks, we could probably get a few million, we got some updated line of cordables, I think we're in pretty good shape right now. And, uh, but like the mobile areas once in the truck, I think, uh, the once shallower in Washington County goes to eight hundred, you know, things should look a little bit better, but we'll need to be able to communicate with them and do it.
Yeah, we'll talk about this more later, but I think that there's a need for a lot of personal protection equipment that's, that, uh, the fire department needs.
Okay. Okay, this is my parks department report for August, twenty-twenty-five. Picked up garbage and tree limbs in the park, put up signs about cleaning up after the citizens' dogs. And we also, they installed a doggy waste station near the deck hockey rink up in City Park. And that was as a result of resident complaints about the mess. Cut the parks and ballfields, got ready for the concert in the park, cut and trim trees in the park, helped the street department as needed. And that is my re- report. And I also wanted to say, because we're finished with the concerts in the parks, we had a lot of visitors from out of town and everyone just raves about the condition of City Park and they said, what, how lucky we were to have that and how beautiful it was. And I know the guys worked really hard to make it look beautiful, so I'm very thankful that they did it, it made us look good. So that is my report. And, um, I'd like to make a motion, first, before I make this motion, I, I looked at last year's minutes and it was in, I think, October tenth that we had received a letter from Carlos Spangler requesting the use of City Park for the trunk or treat. We did not, as far as I know, get a letter this year.
We got an email, but not, not a response.
Okay.
Where's it at? Pardon me? Where's it at? I can supply to you, yeah. Yes, that would be nice because we have to vote to give them permission to use the walking track. Well, the, yeah, they used that whole area down there for the trunk or treat. Right, and it's not an issue, but again, we've done that for as long as I've been on council, and it's over ten years and it's, they have to request it first. They, they did my email, I can supply that to you, but, uh, if you wanna hold voting, I mean, that's prerogative.
Is this something we require everyone to do, submit a letter that we vote on at a meeting?
Or request, yeah, yes.
To use the park?
Mm-hmm.
So can I, I make this motion today and then?
Uh, is it the same lady that wrote the email from the person from last year? I mean, is it the same lady? I, I mean, it'd be nice to have a letter, but I'd go by good faith.
It's the same. I've, I've supplied, yeah.
And just go with the motion.
Okay. Um, motion to hold Halloween activities and approve dates for the trunk or treat Halloween event to be held at City Park on October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, from two to four P M. For the Monessin Halloween Holiday Parade to be held in conjunction with the Monessin Number One Fire Company and Ricky Dick of Castle Blood on Thursday, October thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Now here it says, beginning at six, but I thought I was given a flyer, it said lineup is at six-thirty and the parade begins at seven. Is that correct? Lineup at six?
Okay.
Okay, so, um, beginning, line-
Well, that's, okay, you wanna say lineup at six?
Lineup at six and at seven o'clock, the parade begins. And trick or treat for the city of Monessin to be held on October, um, twenty-twenty-five. After discussion, I, I'd like to recommend that we have it on October thirty-first.
Yep.
Which is Halloween, and it was explained to me because of the way Halloween fell this year, we could actually have trick or treat on Halloween rather than lumping it together with, um, trunk or treat, and it would be from six to eight P M.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yep.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
And please remember that cleanup day in the city of Monessin is this Saturday, September twenty-seventh, from nine to one o'clock P M. At the Sixth Street Park, which is on, um, on McKee Avenue where that sunflower sculpture is. We'll have a table there with all the, the gear and everything that we'll need. I hope we have a good turnout, it would be nice just to have lots and lots of bags of litter. We didn't do it in the spring because we had rain every time we planned it. And the electronics drop-off is at the city garage at the same date and time. That's alright.
Weather's supposed to be good, too.
One note-
Yes.
Mayor, one note about that, though?
Yes.
Is there a requirement that some, that they have their I Ds, city, you know, that they have a driver's license to be able to do this? Or what's gonna happen is that you're gonna have people from other municipalities hear about it and come over here and draw stuff off and they're gonna get inundated.
For the light bulbs drop-off.
Yep.
Has that been an issue?
Most people give us, if we don't know them personally as residents, they'll give us their I Ds.
Alright, I think that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything they'd like to discuss before I open it for public comment? Hearing nothing, I now open the floor.
S L A's, S L A's, did that, we're still waiting on, yeah, L S A's, are we still waiting on that?
We're still waiting on that, I think that has to do with what's going on in Harrisburg.
Yeah, okay, alright, no, that's, I was just wondering.
But are they all five-four or what's the status?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I have requested an L, a listing of L S A's and what they were and the amounts that I never received.
For the new applications, yeah.
Okay.
And we've got-
And the old ones.
We've got some time for that.
And the old ones. Okay.
For a receiver.
Yeah.
So is someone gonna answer my question?
Yes, Mike will get that for you.
I definitely will get, yes, and I have the two contracts here for last year. Uh, what's the status on the police vehicles?
That's the same thing, waiting on them. Harrisburg does, does settle the budget so we can get the money.
Yep. We've applied, though? Yes. I'll get you the information, yeah. Yeah, I, I'm sorry I didn't, apologize for that, but definitely will get that for you. So you'll also be able to provide the actual contract when, when all that too? Well, here's the contracts for the, uh, the police. They're receiving twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred for the cameras and the smoke. No, no, I'm talking about the police cars. The two, yes, she approves that through that program, yes. But that's- Didn't we apply, did we do the full application and submit it? It's, yes, there's, there's one part that I have to take from the chief.
I, I emailed you this morning.
I, I saw that, so I just have to add one part to it, but it's- So wait a minute, we gotta get this straight, so there's no miscommunication. Has the two, the grant or whatever for the police vehicles been submitted yet? Yet or no? No, no, it, but it's in the process and in there. That's nice, but when is the deadline? Tomorrow? No, that doesn't have a deadline, um, the deadline for the statewide L S A grants is November thirtieth. For the local L S A match grants, it's September thirtieth. So that is coming up next week? Yes. Chief Heppel and I have been working on, uh, if he wants to talk about it, the lithium battery firefighting related. But it's going in September thirtieth, yeah.
Sat down the other day to talk about.
Yep, and we did, we finalized that, what they're looking to do. Okay, so when is the police vehicles going to be submitted? Tomorrow, I'll add that information that the chief gave me to tweak the number and I'll submit it tomorrow. But it's in the single application format already, ready to go. You do that as an ongoing element. Okay. But I'll, I'll forward it to you and, you know, you can see the, the documents that go from there. Okay.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment directed to myself on any remaining items of business ordinances, any related items of business ordinances, statutes, resolutions, or daily work product in the attention of the city of Monessin.
I have a couple things I wanna go over.
Here, use this, Mike, it works much better than that.
Alright, my name is Kristy Har. Uh, the first thing I wanna talk about is at the end of Reed Avenue, the six hundred block there at the end going to Ninth Street. The drain cover at the very end there by the White House, so it would be on the left side of the road. The drain cover, it looks like maybe a truck ran it over, but it is, you know, off kilter, it is up in the air. I can show you a picture if you'd like to see it, but it's big enough that a dog could fall in there, so that needs to be put back in place.
Is that something you can test? Delmar?
Uh, it's at the very end of Reed on the Ninth Street. Yes, so it's the White House there, it's right in front of the White House. It looks like maybe the, um, dump truck or something took a corner or two and, I mean, it would have had been big to move that massive thing. Yes. Yeah, I have a picture if you wanna see it, but I, I noticed that this morning, so when I was leaving the house, I happened to notice that, um, and-
Is that the other one, is that the one, is that sinking? Chief Heppel, is that, is that one sinking in, like one of?
I think it's one of the old style, the same, the same style we're dealing with over there.
Okay.
It's got that strange pop.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not sinking, it's just, it literally looks like a huge truck ran it over and it kinda went up, but it, it's big enough that a dog could fall into, so it, it does need to be addressed. Well, yeah, if a kid got, you know, inventive enough, they could fit themselves in there, they're, they're bendy like that. Um, okay, so the next thing is, um, on that road, so six hundred block of Reed, um, I was wanting to know if we could get speed bumps put in. Uh, right when you come up over that corner, uh, where the, the actual, the pedestrian crossing sign is right there, if we could get one right there and the one just below the driveway to my house. And the reason is because everyone comes flying up over that thing doing like forty-five like they're, you know, trying out for the Dukes of Hazzard rerun, and somebody's gonna get hit. I mean, I've already seen, you know, people have to run out of the way, or if a car is, you know, trying to get out, almost get clipped, um, they've almost hit the deer a couple times. There's no other way to get them to slow down coming down that thing without a speed bump, so they'll, they'll learn real fast once they hit one of those. So, is that possible in any way, shape, or form?
There's, there's some issues associated with speed bumps, they're not all the panacea that they might appear to be.
Well, no, there's always problems with everything, but it's either that, there's little kids right there.
Well, you have, we have- We have plowing that takes place, it tears up equipment if you hit the plows with them, uh, there's some, some legal issues associated with them, as I recall.
They have to be up to ten dot specifications.
Yeah, I know they can't be so high.
It's not, it's not an easy thing, I would like to suggest that we, uh, discuss that during our next work session in more detail.
I just know there's a bunch of little kids right there and someone's gonna get.
Speeding is a problem throughout this city, it's not limited to that road or that particular section of town.
Oh, I know.
People are driving too fast. We've gotta figure out a way to improve our, our, uh, enforcement of our speed law, speed limits that we have. Just enforcing that would be a huge advantage if, if we could figure out a way to get that done.
The biggest issue with that particular one, it's a blind, a, a, as you're coming over, you don't see anything and people just, you know, like I said, they come flying off of that and I, it's just eventually someone's going to get hit, so however a way to fix that, I'm open to any idea, so. Okay, uh, so the next thing is the sidewalk in front of my house. We've talked about this many, 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 many times. Alright, so, uh, this was, um, the beginning of last year, uh, I think it was February, March, whatever, they were coming through, can everybody hear me? I've got a big mouth, everyone would be showing hearing. Um, they were coming through and, uh, some, a contractor with the city was replacing the sewage pipes coming up through there. And as they were coming up through, they hit my water line and the water company had to come out and replace my water line, and that's when they informed me that lines on my side of the road were led and they were condemned. Cool, not a problem. So then, a couple days later, they hit my water line again and they had to have the water company come back out and run water line again. Then they hit my sewage line and collapsed it, and they fixed that and said, hey, um, your side's collapsed too. Now whether that happened, when they collapsed their side of the line, or if it was before, who knows, who cares, I don't. So I do have HomeServe worst, company ever, do not go through them. Uh, if, for them to come out, fix it, not a big deal. As they were coming further up the road, 'cause I couldn't have them come while they were working, then they hit my gas pipe. Now luckily, they didn't break that one, but after all of this and I finally got, you know, how many months of having HomeServe come out, 'cause I think it took them like eight months or whatever to come out and take care of the whole thing. But once it was all done, I finally repoured my driveway on, uh, June first, so it actually started earlier, so it would have been the end of twenty-twenty-three, I believe. But June first, I poured my new driveway. Um, they had said at the time that they were going to repour the entrance to my driveway, and I told them, until they come and tear up all my lines and replace it, it would be a waste of product, it would be a waste of labor. And, you know, it didn't make sense 'cause they were gonna have to dig that whole section up to run a whole new pipes to my house, so I told them, just to wait, I'd let you guys know when, eh, you know, they were done and that you guys could come in and pour the entrance to my driveway again. So the first time I came up and I talked with you, Mike, you said you were gonna look into it. The second time, you told me you had no way of knowing who the contractor was that did it and was just going to have to play out. And I don't know how you cannot know who you paid for, I mean, you wrote a check out to them, so I figured it'd be pretty easy. Uh, the third time I talked to you, you said you were gonna wait till this spring.
That's what we had said, I don't remember the second part, uh-
Well, we wait till spring, but again, that was spring.
Yeah.
Spring, 'cause it's autumn now. Um, you told me we were gonna wait till spring, I said, that's fine.
And that's when the contractor indicated to us that they were gonna be-
What was the address of this?
Uh, six, seven, six Reed. So-
So that, that's the portion that was repaved Reed-wise? Is any, anything hasn't been done there is what I'm saying.
Well, yeah, they're actually, um, just up the road, um, just on that same block, two other sections of the sidewalk have been repoured, I have pictures of them, so-
Okay. Okay.
I even came up and I told you that, hey, they've already reported these, but they still have not for, I cannot use my driveway. So I came up here last month with a letter that I had, uh, mar stamp and date to give to you, that you were gonna call me back. I've never heard from you. It's autumn now. So I came up here last month with a letter that I had, uh, mar stamp and date to give to you, that you were gonna call me back, I've never heard from you, it's autumn now, I really want my driveway back, I don't think I'm asking for a lot, I really want my driveway back. It does me no good if I can't use it, and of course, it's a tripping hazard, anybody, I have pallets there to keep people from walking, but I've already seen people, because the, the, uh, water cleanout is right there, and people trip over it trying to walk through that gravel, I don't want somebody face planting on my property because this isn't getting fixed.
Now, the last time that we talked and you're saying this, this was referred to code, and I believe they got back to you or talked with you to say that we're at, not at the mercy of the company, but once the company is gonna perform those functions on those sidewalks, it will happen, they haven't done it.
But they already did, like four houses up on my side and five houses up on the other side, again, I have pictures of where they poured other parts of the sidewalk and repaired it, but not mine.
Has Vitell been involved in this?
He has not, but the code has, so maybe he's-
I'll get Vitell involved in this, cause Vitell has dominion over the repair work that was done, he'd know who did the repair work, he's the one that would hold them responsible for making the fixes.
Right.
It was our project, city project?
Yes.
Yeah, so the city paid the bill on it.
Yeah.
Right. So we should be able to hold the company accountable?
Exactly, exactly.
We hope, yes.
So who's, who's the company?
I don't know, we need to get Vitell and Vitell-
We have it, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
I'll get hold of Vitell tomorrow, and I'll figure out what that's all about.
Alrighty, and the last thing I pretty much wanna cover it up is, um, property, I have been trying desperately to buy the property that touches my property since Matt was still in office. I have come down, I have, I've filled out the paperwork, I have filled out, I've written letters, I've had them stamped by whoever was managing the desk, hm?
Who owns the property now? Who owns the property now?
You guys do, it, they're all owned by Monessen, uh, the properties that I am trying to purchase are, um, so it, it's everything that touches my property, so we've got, uh, twenty-dash-oh-two-dash-oh-six-dash-oh-dash-oh-five-two, twenty-dash-oh-two-dash-oh-two-dash-oh-dash-three-sixty, and then the rest of them, they're all the same except for three-fifty-nine, three-fifty-eight, three-fifty-seven, three-fifty-six, and three-fifty-five. Uh, I have, again, several notes saying, hey, I wanna buy this, I've had them time stamped, and I have a copy of them, so that I have proof that I have been asking for years now to get this property, I've been told that you guys, you know, need money for projects, yet I'm here trying to buy this, check in hand, I have the check for the asking price of the property, I want to buy the property, I have never been given a reason as to no. Uh, the only thing that I have had is I've come up here and I've talked with, uh, you many, many, many times, Ron, about it, and I've gotten, let's see, you're gonna look into it, um, I came to the meeting in April twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty-three and discussed this exact same problem, okay, and you said you didn't know anything about it, even though I'd already submitted several requests prior to that, I talked to you, uh, you actually did come up onto my porch and told me that in order to sell me that property, I had to do something for you, now, it doesn't matter what that thing that was, be careful, in the day of Ring cams, might wanna watch what you say, it doesn't matter what you ask me to do, quote-unquote, is illegal.
And I've never done that.
Okay, well, you know, maybe there's footage that says differently, but anyhow, does not matter, I want this property, and if you're going to deny it to me, I need it in writing as to why you're denying to me, I need cause, so that I can take legal matters into my own hands.
I wanna know why we wouldn't be able to move forward with this.
Well, we talked about it in our work session, we're not doing a motion tonight, it's not our agenda.
Don't have to make a motion, the ladies here are asking a question, let's, let's address her a question, that's why you have questions from the audience, is it their time to say something?
Right, so let's, let's talk, uh, uh, put it on the work session, and we'll move forward with it.
Okay.
Uh, here is a letter.
My question is, my question is, is it a redevelopment offer?
Because we can't vote on it now, it's not our agenda.
We don't have to vote on it.
Here is my letter with the properties, and there is my check.
And we don't want you to check, you just take, no, take the check.
Well, no, I'm very serious, I want this property, I've been trying for four years.
No, you can't, you can't, no, take the check back.
But you don't have to cash it until it's done.
No, you need to physically take that back.
Ring cam have a lot of them. So, there's no, there's no structures on any of these?
No, they're just empty lots, they're completely overgrown, I want to cut down all the trees, I wanna make it look like it's not this massive mess of weeds and trees, and I just wanna extend my property, that's all.
I, I don't know what the properties are, we'll have to take a look at them.
They could be redeveloped before your properties.
Do you have a copy of this?
Uh, not of that particular one.
Can I make a copy right now?
Yes. But at this point, I do believe I've, I actually submitted seven different letters, that I do have copies and time dates on all of them, so if I were to do an open records request, you would need to produce those.
I'm, I'm sorry, what was that?
Uh, I actually, every time I've come down here and submitted a letter, I had a copy of it, and I had the lady that was working up here date-stamped it saying that it was received, and if I were to do an open rel, you know, request, you would have to produce those, I have my copy, I certainly hope you guys have yours, but there is absolutely no reason at this point why I cannot purchase that property, and for years you have not done anything with it, so you can't claim you were going to.
They may not be for sale.
They are for sale, I was told they were for sale before I was told no, so.
By who?
Yes, as I said before, you came up on my porch, Marvin went driving the car.
You're gonna have to show me this video, cause I don't recall that, anyway, you're telling me.
Marvin was driving the vehicle, and you came up and told me I had to do something for you first before you would sell me any properties, and I said, quote-unquote, is illegal, and you're like, well, it's not, but you need to do this, well, it doesn't matter what you said, you could have asked for a turkey sandwich, it doesn't really matter, you can't do that, it's illegal. All I wanna do, I want this stall to go away, I just wanna buy the property and move on, and we never have to speak of it again, but at this point, I'm doing it on camera, because obviously four years of paperwork is not getting me anywhere.
Do you still have a current lawsuit against Marvin Davis?
Yes, I do.
That's part of this puzzle also, folks, that-
Oh, yes, I was told I had to drop that lawsuit, since you brought it up, that is what he told me, I had to drop that lawsuit in order for you to sell me that property, and you cannot request that.
No, I don't, I don't think it's- That's still a current lawsuit, though?
We don't need to just start going under, Dave, from Mr. Corbano.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify one point here.
See, I wasn't gonna mention what it was, but since you did, you cannot request I drop a lawsuit in order to get, for me to be allowed to buy property from the city, again, that's not legal.
I- I, nor not, I'm not discussing it. I'm not, I just said, do you still have that ongoing, that's all my question.
Yes.
Mike, that's enough.
Yeah, okay. Anything else?
No, I believe that covers everything.
Thank you.
Wait. No, we're, this, this has gotta stop now.
I'm just gonna ask her my question.
This has to stop now, Mr. Chakowski.
I'm gonna ask her her phone number.
Okay.
I, I don't know.
Thank you.
You all have a lovely day.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Hi, hello, this is, you know, um, I'm gonna fix up this block on McKee, actually behind, probably right behind where she lives on the green, and my question is, what do I have to do, I've talked to the mayor, what do I have to do to get the alley cleaned up, which is an access road to my garage? It's in very bad condition, very bad condition, in a minute, I'm not gonna be able to get back there, and then there's another entrance off of Reed that will also come down to my garage, which is in worse condition, I'll take either or, but it needs to be cleaned up back there, we're looking like we live in a jungle, it, uh, it's just years and years of neglect, and we're trying to clean up the street.
What is your name?
My name is Jewel Cross.
What is it?
Jewel Cross.
Oh.
Well, they have the other one closed off. They closed it off, there's one closed off, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I've been working with our streets department, trying to get some, get that on the list, the issue is that we are, have seven people, we've got roads that they're trying to do take care of, parks they're trying to take care of, and they need to take care of the alleys as well, along with the steps, it's just a big, long list of things, and we're limited on manpower, it's not that we're not trying to get it done, it's just we're limited on manpower.
I understand, but, and, eh, exactly, there's gonna be, what, a cleanup day on Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, while you are out there, I'm gonna show you Parkway, which is really a historic real street, it hasn't been cleaned up but once all summer, it is a jungle.
So help us clean up on, on this-
No, you clean it up, you clean it up, what, what, why do I have to clean up Monessen?
Why do I have to clean it up, it's a, we're a community, we all work together to make this a better community.
You know what, if you do, if you do your part on our street, we will help, but we're not getting any help.
I will be there to- I will be there to clean up-
The things that are done-
In your area of town.
We are trying to do it, we get up in the alley, we, we do what we can, I asked if a tree could be trimmed, because I can't reach it, and every time I go down that alley, it, it beat up my car, the top of my car, so it, it's, it's pitiful, and I've asked you, and you said you were gonna ride past there, I've given a lot, and what, and what did you conclude?
And I did. I concluded you're exactly right, there's a lot, that alley needs a lot of help.
Sorry, I apologize, I was late, ma'am, I, is this growth that we're talking about, or is this debris or a mixture of both?
Everything.
I, I really, I mean, I really agree with that, I think we need to get someone, if we can, if we need a plant, and get trees cut down, um, I, I don't wanna take the, the ball on this.
I mean, you don't even know if there, the streets, it's so bad back there, you don't know, are you gonna, ac- actually, I had a worker that said, I hit something in that alley and it messed up my tire, I'm gonna have to get a new tire, and I thought, well, thank, look, I'm thinking, well, thank God, I haven't messed up a tire, but I thought I wanted to buy a car and not have an SUV, but there's no way I could drive a car back there.
No, you didn't, unless you, we're not even too sure if the roads are gonna fall down, too, is it a functional alley?
It is, it needs to be maintained, it's like a road.
The road, it needs to be part of the park, I had friends that lived up there.
We got roads that are bad, too, though.
Um, but the debris, I can't see why we can't cut that back.
Right, just cut it back and make it look like somebody's trying to live there, on the same note, right there on McKee Way, you tore down a house on the corner as you come around onto McKee. It's, it's unbelievable what that lot looks like, and there's a huge tree that has been laying on the ground, I just came back here last year, that has never been cleaned, and it's like, I guess it's supposed to be normal that we live that way, no, it's not normal for me, it's embarrassing.
Is that the corner McKee going up towards the divide-off?
No, before that.
Okay.
Yeah, when you come around McKee Way.
Yeah, okay.
And right on that corner, that's gotta be cleaned up, it's gotta be cleaned up. Right, it's the old, that, that lot, right there, so you know, I don't think I'm asking for much, but I just don't think that there's a, um, equal allocation of funds as far as for cleaning up the streets, and, and I, I don't wanna live like that.
Completely agree.
Anything else, thank you, anybody else?
Thank you, ma'am. I don't think you have a down, thank you.
Bubba Palmer, twelve-twenty-eight Maple, I'm here to speak on behalf of the, uh, the fire department, uh, we're here this evening in anticipation for a CDBG meeting that was, at the last council meeting said was gonna be held beforehand, uh, that's why we're here tonight, because, uh, we wanted to come show support for what the mayor proposed at his first, uh, meeting, um, and maybe give a little input, that, uh, that program has been very helpful for us the last few years, got us some radios, uh, like he just, uh, uh, said this evening, we'll be getting released forty-eight thousand dollars, uh, for twelve sets of gear, each department has six guys that are waiting for the gear, uh, that money be well spent, we appreciate the help on that, uh, the same with the, uh, L.S.A. money, whenever that gets released, we, we, we're ready to order the two fans and the two thermal image cameras, uh, again, we have, everybody's ready to go, as soon as you guys get the money, releases to us, everything will be ordered, they'll be in service immediately, and that's for you guys, and for us and everybody's family, uh, just, just to help to keep the community safe, try to keep up with, uh, as much safety equipment as we can, and, uh, like I said about the CDBG, we come to give a little input, so, uh, we're looking forward to, when you do have the meeting, we'll, we'll come down and, uh, you know, voice our opinion, and, and, uh, hopefully comes, and we can stay as part of that program, excuse me, you guys help us move forward still, thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question, is that, uh, silver oil, did you guys purchase that? That's nice, I was looking out, it is a nice little truck.
Anybody else?
Thanks, Bubba.
Mike Castner, fourteen-nineteen Arlington Street, I'm here to speak also on behalf of the fire department, but most importantly, the Hilltop Fire Department, wanted to express our gratitude, uh, for getting the floor repaired, uh, getting the drain repaired, and again, speaking tonight on behalf of moving forward with the repairs of the shower, upgrades and things that are very necessary, uh, but if I, if I may elaborate with what, uh, Bubba had talked about, the L.S.A. money, the CDBG, it definitely goes a long way, you know, we, we really appreciate and support you guys with what you're doing to help us, and hopefully in the future, we can collaborate together to continue to make sure we have that support, thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Mayor motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at seven fifty-five P.M., September twenty-fifth.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meter is, the meeting is adjourned, thank you, people.